Franklin County Board of, County Commissioner denied session. Commissioner Jones, would you leave us in prayer?
Yes, sir.
Please, please, sir.
Our Father, we come to you today in the name of Jesus our Lord. We thank you for this day that you have given to us. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning, whether we're representative of decision-making or representative of giving thoughts to the process. Father, we thank you today for each and everyone here. God, thank you for the people, their residents, and those that have visited this county. We ask that you would be with us in discernment and discretion today. Give us the knowledge we need to make the best decision possible, not for today only, but for the future of Franklin County in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pray allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have an agenda right here where my eyeballs can see it, but Judge Russell would like to come in here and just submit it and say a few words to you all. So while you're paying the bills, I'm gonna go get Judge Russell.
Okay. Next on the agenda will be approval of the minutes. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mastin, second by Commissioner Perry, and discussion on it. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Next will be payment of the county bills.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Perry, second by Commissioner Jones, and discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Okay, next, we're gonna debate.
Good morning. Good morning. Come on in, Judge. It's not that often that a judge gets to be on TV. Usually when it happens, it's not a good thing. There's something going on, but Alan was kind enough to invite me, give me the opportunity to come in and be on our local television station.
Go to the microphone, Judge. Sure, right there to the microphone, so I can hear him.
Oh, okay. You know, I've said this to people a thousand times, and I have to be reminded myself. But I just wanted to take a moment to thank the commission, Madam Clerk, Ms. Johnson, for the opportunity, the privilege to serve the people of Franklin County for thirty years. It's been a great privilege. I've enjoyed it, and I wish everyone the best. And a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Going back to the agenda, will be next on the agenda will be the public comment.
My name is Diane Brewer. I'm a resident and citizen and property owner in Appalachia Cola. I would like to speak on the hospital issue, but I don't see it on the agenda. So am I supposed to speak now or later during, after their presentation?
Speak now.
Speak now, okay. I noticed in the printed matter that was provided in the handouts that the recommendation is to reject the Sacred Heart proposal. I am here to ask you to reconsider that rejection. The county commission and the county has had many years to fix the problems at an aging facility that really cannot be made effective or economic. So rather than spend more good money after bad, I would urge you to seriously reconsider the Sacred Heart or other proposals that may enable Franklin County to get a healthcare system that will be both efficient, modern, and economic. The only reason that many people go to the facilities that are here locally is if they can't spend fifteen minutes or fifteen miles to get to the Sacred Heart facility in Saint Jo, Port Saint Joe. That facility is within five years, new construction, completely wonderfully staffed, beautifully run. Sacred Heart people know what they are doing. So I ask you to reconsider the recommendation of your, that was made to reject the Sacred Heart proposal. Thank you.
Next public, next on the public comment. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Mike O'Connell. I'm the incoming president of the Saint George Island Civic Club. At the TDC meeting last week, the TDC endorsed William Bolden, who is here today for the vacancy to represent Saint George Island, and I would strongly encourage you to accept his nomination to be on the TDC council. He is our only representative for the island. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the public comment.
Good morning, Commissioners. Alan Pfeiffer. Today, I'm just coming up here to thank the road. We had our Christmas party for Alligator Point, Saint Teresa on Saturday, and I just wanted to thank, the road department has done yeoman's service this year. While everybody can't be happy all the time, the work that our small road department has done to provide access to Alligator Point has to be noted and thanked by the citizens of Alligator Point. Just done outstanding job with the resources at hand, and that's all I've got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more public comments?
I've come to ask.
Let me get your name.
I'm Joyce Estes, and I don't know which hat I'm wearing today. I have been out in the Lime Rock Fire area, and it is, it's the third world country at our back door. I've been to third world countries, and this one is no different. I started visiting the people out there, and they have hopeless faces. And so in praying and asking God, how can we help? He gave me a vision of Hope Park, which would be a park to place in the middle of that area so that people would have a safe place to go, someplace that the children would find that they could go to. And AJ had asked for a substation area. It would be that. There is a piece of property in foreclosure, and I placed my name on purchasing it. However, my churches stepped forward, and they want to purchase it for Hope Park. This would give the kids a place to go and the families a place to go, and churches have stepped up and said that once, each weekend, we would have a church to go out and minister to the people there. I've got pictures. I have my concerns. I'd like for you to have them, who would take them. They are stacked up from eight to ten back. This is what we're dealing with, is multiple connections on one lot. I've visited some families, a father that has three children, and he lost his job in the hurricane. You can see the blue tarps on several, I've got multiple pictures, but I've just brought a few. Two, three, five trailers hooked up to one place. So what do you get is an extension cord and a hose. The gray house that you will have a picture of is the house that's under foreclosure, and we will purchase. However, to show you the squalor that's out there, a mother and three children are living there with no water and no electricity, but they live there. It's the most disgraceful place I've ever been because we have money sitting here and we don't have, I mean, I know you have plans for it, but I know that people at Christmas and Thanksgiving are outpouring with gifts. We have a gymnasium full of toys, better than any saddle workshop you could ever want to go to. Caravel has clothes. Some of the churches have food, but they don't have a way to get there. They have no place to go to, to get anything. So what I'm asking you, and this is another handout that I can't, can't get to you all in three minutes this morning, but these are my concerns. They, I've talked to the health department, and they have no code enforcement. You have no code enforcement. How do we enforce codes when there's three and five people hooked up to one hookup? I went to one trailer that has a three or four month, probably four month old baby now, and a three-year-old with one extension cord, no heat, maybe they have water, I didn't ask. It just goes on and on and on. A man that has been displaced with his Medicare, and he doesn't have funds to get any medication that he has, and he has cancer. East Point Water and Sewer has stepped up to the project that we have written a grant to the swim program. We have water and sewer all the way through Ridge Road and Wilderness Road and Book Street and Bear Creek. We have water and sewer. They can't afford to hook up. They have, they don't have the thousands of dollars to hook on. We have asked for a grant to service these people with free hookups. So we need your help in code enforcement. We need the health department code enforcement for all these double hookups. We can do our share at East Point Water and Sewer, but we need your help. Also, Denton Cove is not wanted in Appalachia Cola.
Ma'am, wait.
I called Denton Cove, and I've called Denton Cove, and Denton Cove is going to have a conference call with us tomorrow, and we will be to offering them some of the amenities that they need to bring Denton Cove in, and we will be looking for property for that. But I appreciate whatever you can do. I appreciate the help that you can give us. I would like to be on the agenda January the 2nd to follow through with these concerns that I have, and maybe we can have some answers. I am willing and able to help with some of the plans that are being made. I will do what I can to help, but we can't forget these people after Christmas. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And his.
Next public comments.
Second.
Next on the public comment.
I'm Linda Clark. I'm an East Point resident. I also have gone and seen all these people. I've seen a couple dozen of them from the fire victims, then they were hit by the hurricane as well. I have been delivering food, helping them. I've been picking them up, taking them to churches to go get food, to go get clothes and everything. I don't know how we can help them, as Joyce said, with the water and everything. I've got five houses where they're illegally hooked up to power and water, and they have kids in the house, and they're afraid of saying anything because they don't want to lose their children. But the thing is, these kids don't need to grow up, like she said, as a third world country, when there's things in a hands-reach away from them. I have been not telling them, talking with them, praying with them from the church, not to put your hand out like this for us to fill it up. We can help you. Put your hand out like this, let us help you. How can we help you? I've been going out there since the hurricane for six weeks. I went out there twice a week to every single house that I saw that had a kid in it, helping them in any way I could. And I feel horrible that I live around the corner. I have water, I have power, I have food, I have a car to drive. They can't even get to medical care. There's a father there with three children. He's got his father there who's disabled and everything. He can't get around and get nowhere. They got two trailers beat up. It needs a new roof. Somehow, we can get together, just like AJ Smith does with the porches for the handicap people, even if it's just to quickly put a fix on there and help them out and say, here's step one, you make step two. And then you know if they're gonna make step two, those people want the help and need the help. But they can do things. They don't have the money or the ability or the knowledge to say, where do I go and how do I do it? They feel like they're in a bottomless pit, and they just need help. But I do also want to ask, I had asked Fonda earlier about the dog issue in our neighborhood, which he's aware of, and it's picking back up again off of Hickory Dip Road there, that there's dogs running around. And I've got two people in the neighborhood on electric scooters. They can hardly walk. How do they get around if you have dogs running up that just had puppies? And you've got ten puppies running up to elderly people or disabled people, and they're gonna fall. And hopefully, Fonda will speak with me later. If we need to set a trap in my yard again, I don't mind doing that. I hate to do that, but what do you do if they don't take care of the dogs that they have? I mean, you can't have them running around. Then we end up with the rabies problems with raccoons and everything. But I have one other thing, and that's trying to find out, which I had brought up with Ricky, about the road on Hickory Dip. Even since the hurricane, that road is horrible. And I agree with what they said about Alligator Point. I love the work that they've done with the road crew and cleaning up and everything, but now you have all these big trucks going on damaged roads and making them worse, and we're getting big, huge holes in the road, and they keep filling it in, and two weeks later, it's out again. And then we got a flat tire going down towards North Bay Shore off of Hickory Dip on one of them holes and didn't know it opened back up again when it rained. Somehow, we gotta do something about some of these roads that need major repairs, you know, so that we don't have issues. They've gone off into Pam Noble's yard, hitting, going down the dip, coming up, and end up in her yard because they hit a bump in the road with a hole. So those are my three major primary concerns.
Okay, ma'am, you're three minutes up.
Okay.
Tell the people, so hip on the way. There's some trailers coming. I don't know when, but trailers coming. Next on the agenda, I meant, next public, any more public comment?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say something.
Go ahead.
Ladies and gentlemen, I know, just from the spirit of the commissioners that are here and the relationships that we have developed, that you're being heard, and I just want you to know that we welcome these public comments. We're taking notes. It's all about people helping people help themselves. And I know that we'll, in the post-meeting, we'll have this discussion about how we can facilitate many of the issues that you've talked about. These are passionate people helping people help themselves issues, and I just want you to know that the commission is listening, and we welcome these public comments all the time. Thank you.
Any more public comment? Okay, next on the agenda will be Ms. Heather Riley, Supervisor of Elections.
Good morning, Commissioners. I was here earlier in the year, and we discussed looking at the possibility of a new building, a bigger building, a building with more room. We had to kind of table that till after the elections. We did have several issues arise during the elections that makes it clear that we definitely are in desperate need of more space. Homeland Security came. I gave you a copy of that report earlier in the year. They found a few issues with where we are at the time being that need to be addressed. But I met with Michael and Heath Galloway at one location at a building that we're looking at, and I'm just asking for direction from the board to give Michael either the go-ahead on moving forward and meeting with Heath and looking at options to see, you know, where we stand and what we're looking at.
Okay. Michael, what you got?
Okay, Commissioners, I'll refer to it as Old AmeriGas Building. That's the building that she's, Supervisor of Elections is referring to. It's approximately, in total, 3,000 square feet. It's divided evenly, 1,500, 1,500 storage and office space. There's been a lot of improvements. Heath has new flooring in the office area. Entire building is new electric, new plumbing, new HVAC, with the storage area also cooled and heated. The option, Commissioners, I would say, is to look to purchase the building, not rent the building. The county shouldn't be renting any more buildings. I mean, we have an option to purchase. Currently, Ms. Riley pays $2,000 roughly to where she's at, so there's no room in her budget to move, to pay any additional rent, and that place, the rent will be at probably another $1,000 at a minimum. So it'll be about $3,000 if we, to rent that area. So the option is to purchase. What I would need from the board is the authority to start negotiations with Mr. Galloway as to the cost of the building, and at the same time, do what is called a pre-application, a pre-USDA application, where I can give them a round of about number, and they will tell us basically what we will be funding. We will try our best to get what they call a grant loan from USDA, where some of the money we borrow will actually be a grant, and we will only pay on what was not, it's not the grant, basically, the balance of that money. But I, without this information, without me doing this, I can't, I don't have any more information. So you, to ask me now, you know, what will the payments be and what interest rate, unless I got authority to, from the board, to start negotiations with Mr. Galloway and start the pre-application, preliminary application, I think is the term that they use. That's, that's all I have at the moment.
Well, I think we need to do something because if I remember back, didn't they have inspection of that building then?
Yes.
Yes.
They had, they had a lot of problems.
Yeah.
And I want nobody to get hurt. I want us staff or no public or anybody, because they, the building got issues.
Yeah, there's structural issues, yeah.
But please have the board on this.
In fact, I'm sorry.
Michael, first thing we need to do is get an appraisal of the building, so we know what we're dealing with. It could be up, it could be down. I understand the owner has an appraisal, but the county needs to get their own appraisal. Number two, somebody needs to go through the building and see what, what other upgrades need to be made to it before she can transition to the building. I know the back lot's full of grass and, you know, it needs to be cut, the grass needs to be cut. I think the outside of the building, some of it needs to be painted, and anything else that needs to be done, don't need to be done if we decide to move forward after she moves in. All of this needs to be done ahead of time. So the building needs to be brought up to standard as it makes usable space for the supervisor of elections. And those are, those are my comments, but we need that information before we can make a determination, and I'm gonna make a motion to authorize you to gather the information that you need to gather, along with these other concerns that I've come up with, and then we'll try to see what we can do about moving forward. As you said, we're paying $2,000 a month right now. Don't know how you're gonna increase that to $3,000 a month when it's an unbudgeted item, along with the hurricane and the funds that we have spent on that and other issues with the fire net and all the stuff we've had to do for the sheriff. So funds are limited as to what we can do. So I mean, we need this information. Are we gonna be to borrow the money? Are we gonna, you know, we need to know what we're doing before we make a final decision, in my opinion. And I'll make a motion side effect.
I second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Perry, second by Commissioner Burt. Discussion.
I have something, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Just point of clarification, Chairman Perry, Commissioner Perry. So you're just wanting us to get the appraisal now and get the stuff to know what we're gonna do, but as far as knowing how much it's gonna be, as I understand it, the 3,000 was referring to if we tried to lease it.
To rent, yes.
Or to rent it, other than buying it. But we can't get a clear determination of what it's gonna cost us without doing the other steps that Michael mentioned, to try to start negotiations with Mr. Galloway and to try to do the pre-app. Is that included in your motion?
Yes, and also, I don't wanna rent nothing.
There you go.
If I'm gonna pay so much money a month, I wanna lease, lease it on, rent it on, however you wanna put it, but I want that money going towards eventual purchase and not just a rental where you get, you know, you get a month out of it and that's it. That should be part of your negotiations with the owner.
Okay.
To, and bring back the pertinent information that we need to make a final determination.
You good? You good, Attorney?
Not the same man that owns the other building? Wasn't rented?
No, sir. No.
The one in the back. Well, yeah, what we need, we got to start.
Yeah, and I would just say, one way or the other, if we don't move forward in that direction, then some major things are gonna have to happen where I'm at, because we're just completely out of space. I think y'all were there during the recount.
Yeah.
You know, there are people right on top of our equipment, which is, you know, a big no-no for security issues. There's just a couple of security issues that are troublesome to me that if we don't, are not able to get out of that building, that are gonna have to be addressed, which is gonna be putting money into a building that doesn't belong to us.
But you, they're telling you got enough room for you.
Yeah, the buildings are laid out completely different. The Old AmeriGas Building is laid out where there's a huge amount of warehouse space with plenty of space in the front for office and early vote, where we wouldn't have to have people early voting back on top of our equipment.
Yeah, we need, we gonna need building, and the county got to get out of the rent phase and buy and one day you're owning. I know it's tight, money tight, but the situation we in, it gonna cost us more if we stay down there.
Ms. Heather, do you have guidelines from, say, the, is it the State Department that oversees your office relative to the characteristics of a supervisor's office, those types of things? We have pretty much flexibility to look for what we want.
No, every office is different, laid out different. All I have is the stuff that we got from, you know, Homeland Security that as their checklist, what they look for.
I see.
And I have a copy I can get to you. I've already give copies to the other Commissioners, but I can email you a copy.
That would be huge, I think, to look at that building and make sure that it has some compliances.
Well, I wanna make sure, we wanna make sure that by in your motion, you making sure we gonna find out how much it costs and everything.
Yes, sir.
And you gonna check and see? I want you to check and see on, is you putting it there for him to check with USDA for a loan?
Absolutely. It's all part of the motion.
Okay.
Before we vote, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bold, the, some of the biggest issues that office has are homeland security issues that would be able to be fixed with this building, having the server, the dedicated server for the voting tabulation, would be able to be behind a glass kind of door so it can be seen but not gotten to. And presently, we don't have that, and I can tell you just from doing the cammison board and everything we did with that, yes, we were right on top of each other, so much so that Judge Russell had us move here to the courthouse annex for the manual recount, just because it was so cramped, there was so much going on there, so we brought it to a bedroom room.
You got fencing and all on that building around there, right?
Yes, there is fencing around the back of the AmeriGas Building, which was one of the things that, you know, was, was brought up, that we needed to have something around our perimeter, you know, just for security measures.
Okay. Any more discussion? I read the votes. All, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
All right. Thank y'all very much. Y'all have a Merry Christmas.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify something that you said about the structure of the current building that she's in. The landlord has been in constant contact with me. He's doing, he's planning, either which way, he's gonna improve all the structure issues.
Yeah, he's gonna fix that, yeah.
So I needed that on the record, that the current building will be, all the structural, he got rammed back, you know, and they're doing a, they're gonna do a yeoman's job, I can safely say.
Yeah, I think they're supposed to start that after the first of the year.
So those, those issues will be corrected. I just needed that on the record.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I just know we have a problem with him.
I understand.
I want nobody to get hurt. Okay, next on the agenda will be the department heads. Mr. Howard Nevers, Superintendent of Public Works, Mayor Crispin.
Good morning, Commissioners. How y'all doing?
I'm good.
Got a couple items on the, all the rain, I mean, we've been going through the county for the past three weeks cleaning ditches, culverts. And also, we got, which the other lady was talking about, a lot of debris scattered where the trucks is picking debris up, which we'll be working on that through the year, next year, so got a lot of debris still gotta be picked up, raked up, dirt put back, because the grass grows up through that stuff. Then when you go to cutting grass season, then you got stuff slinging all out in the road, hitting vehicles and people, and we also gonna be working on that, so. And the Alligator Point, which we had a call Friday evening, they washed out on the high tide again, so we got all that fixed, so.
Probably gonna get a call Thursday.
Probably.
No, it poured the rain again.
Probably will. Well, it ain't the rain, it's the high tide, the high tide is washing it out, so.
Yeah.
But we just keep eye on it and do the best we can do with it.
That's all we can do.
I probably will. Well, it ain't the rain, it's the high tide, the high tide is wa, washing it out, so.
Yeah.
But, uh, we just keep eye on it and do the best we can do with it.
That's all we can do.
I'm sorry, I was, you talking about Alligator Drive?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so there is a, a short-term solution that has not yet been developed, and that is to put a, a sand berm, uh, what's called emergency protective action, uh, that Frank McCombs Group on Alligator Point is looking at. Uh, you know, there's some things we have to get resolved, but hopefully in the next, I'd say, few months, maybe only a few weeks, we will have a, a disposable, there's another term for disposable, but sacrificial, uh, pile of sand along the edge of the south side of the road there that'll be eaten away first and that'll protect the road.
Yeah.
So that's, that's where we're headed, but we just have to get state approval on that.
Okay. Sounds good. Then I got one more, which Mr. Piper comes to me potentially wanting to put the counters back up on Alligator Point, which that would have to be a board's approval. I can't okay that. So, I was the counter, the counter, the count, how many vehicles goes in and out? I mean, they put them up before.
They were up before it started.
Yes, sir.
They do it periodically. The idea is to get a, an accurate count of traffic so you have them for a period of time during its high season, another period of low season. They do it periodically because they're trying to get a, a true count of traffic in there. There's no cost to the county, it's just, do you wanna get permission to put these counters across the county road?
What's your recommendation?
I would say, yeah. I mean, they're trying to generate an accurate traffic count there. Doesn't.
So move, put the counters up.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Paris.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mass. Any more discussion?
Just wanna make sure that we have a history of traffic counting already.
Well, no.
Do we not have any accurate numbers?
Yes and no. The only accurate, the only traffic count that's done has been done by the state of Florida on a biannual, every two-year, uh, uh, deal, and they do it on the intersections with the state highway system. So there's a traffic count at the intersection of three seventy and US ninety-eight, but there are no traffic counts further down the road because the state of Florida doesn't care about activities off the state highway system.
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
I think we should maybe specify where those counters are supposed to be located. I don't, don't think I heard any specificity.
We didn't.
Same place they were, but I'm not sure where that was.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get on the record.
We were, we were there on.
I was, before you get to Ballpoint Road, if I ain't mistaken last time.
It was about hundred fifty feet from ninety-eight and Alligator Drive. There's a, there's a sign there that we can anchor to, say, for security.
How many, what, not the five, you have one?
Yeah.
Okay. So.
But that's, I just wanted to clarify for the record the location of the counter and, and the, the number of counters that there was.
And that would be on the inbound roadside.
So that, we gonna put one back, B U R, you got that, would you put that in?
Yeah. One question. The last time, some of the conflict was the, the camera. There was a camera attached there and some of the other residents in Sun and Sand and Ballpoint did not want the camera there. They thought it was an invasion of privacy, et cetera, et cetera.
They didn't need the camera.
That's what I'm asking, if the cameras.
I think they were having some vandalism issues down there.
Yes, sir.
Is why the camera was put there. Uh, I don't know why somebody would oppose.
It was vandalized three times in the first, uh, two weeks.
Okay. So you, we want the camera with it.
Yeah, I would say install whatever they want. Would they think install it safe, make the camera, make the, uh, counters active and safe and, you know, functional. So if you need the cameras, so be it.
Pump, pump the cameras at the, uh, at the device rather than the people coming down the road. How about that?
Absol- absolutely, sir.
So if somebody's messing with the device, you got a camera on the device so make the people aware that the camera's not taking pictures of the car or who's driving the cars, but it, obviously, it's on the device that's doing accounting so that it's not vandalized. I think that's a compromise for everybody.
Thank you, Commissioners.
I'll put that in my motion.
Okay, will you amend your second or?
Yeah.
All right. Y'all, any more discussion?
And not on that, but in the bridge that we brought up at last meeting.
Hold on, hold on.
You've got a vote. Oh, I thought he didn't vote. I'm sorry about that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Then on the bridge that we brought up last time, at New River, I talked to Shane yesterday and they're supposed to be hopefully starting on it by the end of the week or first of next week to fix that.
Okay.
I just had some other thoughts with regard to the debris that's on the roads, relative to the state picking up their part. Um, it's been brought to my attention that there's a residual footprint of debris still left. To reinforce your point, and, and, and I realize these are state roads, but we're looking at, uh, maintenance issues and that type of thing. I'm wondering if we can get the state to, or if we write, perhaps write a letter to the state, just asking them to reconsider going back in there and re-cleaning up more of the debris that's still there after the big, huge piles were removed. I've had some constituents with big concerns and we realize that it's private property and there are policies and procedures for doing that, but we might wanna consider that. Uh, that would be one point. Uh, westbound out of Carabel, about two miles westbound lane, the potholes are dangerously deep now. Uh, there's probably, oh, a half a dozen or so in that stretch that are tire hazardous. And again, this is state, but it seems to me that as an advocate for our county, a, a, a complimentary letter to the state just listing our two concerns in that area, I would suggest we do.
Is that in the form of a motion?
I'll make that as a motion.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Burke, second by Commissioner Mass. Any more discussion on?
Michael, do you know when they're supposed to get started with the permanent repairs? I think last board meeting was a couple of weeks.
I talked to, I talked to Robertson Roberts. They called him up and I had him come in to fix them. Monday was his last day on the road. They fixing to get someone else the road after, I think this weekend, Pam. They letting someone else bid on the road, ninety-eight?
I, I need to verify this, but I think Anderson, Anderson Construction wanted to bid and I think they're about to start sometime. I, I think, I think they've actually started already.
Could you, could you get that information for us and email it to the Commissioners so we know where we're at on that issue?
Starting date is.
Is that, is that on the permanent fix over?
Yes, sir. That would be on the permanent fix. Uh, Robertson Roberts was just temporary patches and I think Anderson is the permanent fix.
Yeah, Sunday night was his last night.
Did he pay it Sunday?
Yeah, he come in and fixed it. Done some work on that. Somebody else got the bid.
They also worked on it on Friday evening, Friday night, too, but that, that stuff just beats out. I mean, you take two days, it beats right back out, so, real asphalt, so.
Mr. Chairman, before we vote, I would like to say, since we're already on this topic, you know, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure I echo the sentiments of all of us up here. They've done a great job. I know it's not been the best in the world. I know it's washing out and beating out, cause lord knows we've had a little bit of rain, uh, but they have done a great job trying to help us maintain our road, even coming out Friday afternoon when it was raining all day from Gulf County to Franklin County, to make sure that stuff was good going into the weekend after just a whole day of a deluge. So, you know, they have, uh, it's been through the state, Robertson Roberts, whoever the contractor was and everybody involved have done a great job. I just wanna mention that one where they're.
And one other thought as we consider this with the state, yes, I wanna say how complimentary the state has been for us. Uh, considering the exit out of Seac, it's called Seahawk Lane, that road that exits out or enters the public school there, uh, if you arrive exiting that road right now, particularly at dark, uh, there's no orientation to the horizon or the edge of the asphalt before you drop off into the bay there. There's no guardrails there, there's treacherous riprap there. And I would like to see the state put some, at least at a minimum, some, uh, road cones right there. Uh, we have young drivers that are making turn radiuses and all types of things, and I think there's a real potential for danger there. I'd like that to happen.
You putting that in, you amend your motion?
I'll amend my motion to add that third point, please.
Okay. What about you? You amend your motion? All right. The motion been amended. Y'all ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Then at one time, I think, there was some cones there at one time, and I don't know if somebody got them, put them somewhere else, or they maybe threw it on the side there in the water, but, oh, you're right, what you're talking about.
The cones were there and they're.
Yeah, one time, yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, Michael, how about?
When you're coming out from the school.
Problem's not much road there.
Yeah.
Maybe they.
Yes, if you put them there, you're gonna be, it's gonna be in the lane of the traffic.
Yeah.
Is that, is that narrow a margin there?
Yes, sir.
I see.
Well, is, Michael, is there any way you can call the state and have them to check that area?
Yes, actually, I mean, I would send a letter, I'm gonna call them after the meeting and take care of all, get all these items, address all these items.
Yeah, tell them it's public. Tell them it's public safety and it's read them from right, right by the school and everything and have them to check it out.
But, Michael, since you're talking to them anyway about that area, I know that there's a lot of signs down all over this county and other counties, but on both sides, the, the sign, the light, the sign that's supposed to be there and the lights that's supposed to come on to slow people down during the times that it's time to go to school or time to get out, and those don't exist. They're not there on either side.
Oh.
Since you're talking to, on ninety-eight, there's nothing going toward the school.
Yes.
Yeah, so, you know, since you're already talking to them about it anyway. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I got one more thing for Mr. Howard.
Great.
Mr. Howard, I would like for you to, to ask you to see, and you can get back with me, I'm not asking, they're trying to put you on the spot today. I need to see if there's anything that can be done. I know that we do a lot of, uh, the county does a lot of work on Alligator Point, a lot of work on the island, especially after rain events, all kind of stuff going on. Are there, I want you to try to find out if there's any different materials we might use to help mitigate and make things not more permanent, but where we don't have to go out as often. Uh, I, I can just say from going around and look, some of it appears to be beach sand type of material on the island, some of it appears to be the limestone that just turns to dust. Uh, and at some point, I'd like to talk to you or get you to bring back to us, uh, different materials we might can use to, to make it where it will last past a rain event. This is what I'm asking.
Well, it's kinda hard. It, St. George Island got no drainage. I mean, there's no drainage there.
We're working on that.
No pipes and stuff, so. And if that water's standing in that road, I mean, it could be asphalt, whatever, if it's standing in that road long enough, vehicles up and down, it's gonna beat out, so.
Yeah.
We did change up from the rock that we were using from Mariana and got some different stuff from Perry, which has got more rock in it.
Right.
But, I mean, this has been going on ever since I've been with the county.
Oh, I understand.
It beats out, so.
Yeah, no.
But we can look.
I wouldn't ask you to make a decision today, but I, I feel pretty confident that anything's better than beach sand.
Yeah.
If you know what you're saying.
Okay.
Alrighty. Anybody else got anything for Mr. Neighbors? Howard, uh, kinda the day you rep, the one I was telling you about, he rep back there in the back. You can talk with him.
Okay, okay.
Okay, um, keep up the good work.
We do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard.
Thank you for what you do. Next on the agenda will be Mr. Funder Davis, Sallie Wade's department. Mayor Crum, to you, you and your department.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Just, uh, need to let you know that we have a piece of equipment down, nine sixty-three track loader, twenty years old. It's down, going to the shop, so we had a rental piece, a D-six dozer for, uh, replacement to handle this storm debris. Uh, the rental is twelve thousand a month for it, so hopefully they'll have ours back.
Do you, do you know how long it'll be done?
Hopefully, that month.
Twelve thousand a month?
Yes. Rental on a piece of, of D-six, heavy, heavy equipment. Two hundred hours only allowed, they only allow two hundred hours on it.
For twelve thousand dollars?
Yes.
You, wait a minute, wait a minute. You done rented it?
Yes.
I have no idea. I'll be.
How long we had it?
We had it, uh.
How long you got it? We rented it.
Hopefully, less than a month.
How long in your?
That track loader's twenty years old. It's, it's in bad shape. That's why, you know, I told you all in the past that we, we need to upgrade.
All right. Please have the board on this.
Hey, you not ask back, you know?
No, no, no. I just wanted to let you know what's.
Does this cost out coming out of your budget? You've got money for rental?
That's correct. Hopefully, we, we get ready first on it, you know, for the storm debris. We have to have it.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Who fixing it? Who fixing?
Uh, Rain Power. It's a piece of caterpillar equipment.
For that kinda money, they ought to rent the, buy.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. What else, what else you got, bro?
That's it. That's all I have for you.
How's your capacity in the landfill coming along?
Well, we, it's still, I mean, we don't slow down a lot, Commissioners. Uh, I think we discussed last meeting, we had about six acres left, um, before we'd be filled up.
Well, fun out, how about your other, how your other equipment holding up? I know you, well, we done had this major disaster, you gonna, you gonna overwork, I mean, you gonna, it gonna cause extra working. If it ain't up to par, it's gonna tip.
Yes. I'm, I'm glad you asked that, Commissioner, because we have a tug grinder that we use to tip, uh, the, the trees, vegetation. Uh, we just had some repairs done of that before the storm and we're looking at about fifteen thousand dollars there. So, the landfill, it, the equipment we have, it, it costs a lot to keep it maintained and keep it, keep it running. Compact, this brace is new, you know, we just purchased it. Uh, two John there, track, it's in good shape, fairly new. Only other, uh, equipment is the trucks, the recycling trucks. They giving me problems now, they back and forth to the shop. It's more than what our mechanics can handle.
Well, keep us posted on that and it's, kinda keep us up to date on that, make sure you, think that chip will gonna hold up. Are you using the chip or not?
Yeah, well, we hadn't been using it since the storm. The, the contractors have their own tug grinder in right now, but once they leave out, we'll start chipping some of the debris that was left.
One of the things I was talking to Pam about is poss, it's possible, she gonna have a consultant check, that we would rent a tug grinder, shipper for the storm debris and not use our existing equipment, just rent one and have FEMA reimburse us because it's clearly storm awaited. We haven't rent this piece of equipment because of a massive amount of debris and, and just see if we can save our own equipment from being used as much. So that's an option we'll look at.
That's correct. I actually talked to the owner of statewide grind.
Okay.
To see what they would consider while they on site, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that is, that's correct.
Well, that'll be the best thing. That way, it won't tear by, because there's a lot of stuff out there. They gonna, they gonna, you gonna have a lot of stuff out there, they gonna.
That's right. So I guess I, uh, do we need to get a motion on that for me to check with?
Well, I think Tracy, uh, her consultant, gonna check first to see how FEMA rules run.
Okay. Okay. I have to probably quit, uh, cause you know, they be ready to move out. I was, yeah.
Okay. Well, you'll get together with Pam.
Yes, sir.
And y'all, um, y'all find out what, what to do and don'ts and let us know, can we do it or, or whatever. Y'all get together and, okay, check on it. And get back with the board. Go ahead.
With Funder, with all the huge deposit of the debris we have in this storm, uh, are you saying that this six acres that you have, you, you can, as needed, go ahead and expand the area where the breeze are dumped in your area as needed?
Within the six acres.
Within the six acres.
That's correct. Yes, sir. And I, I also, uh, I don't know, just talking about land across the street from where we at now, across sixty-five on, uh, the west side, uh, East Point Water Sewer has roughly about forty, forty-five acres. So I don't know if that's something the board may wanna look at, or the state has some adjacent to where we at now. So, we have just something to put out there that we may be wanting to look at.
Do we need to do long-range planting?
Yes, sir.
Six acres versus a potential of forty-five?
Right.
Should we, we're, do you have a prediction of when you think you'll, uh, arrive to the capacity of your current landfill? At, at time, are we thinking a year, two years?
Oh, no, no, no. It'll be longer than that.
Longer than that.
You know, if the storms stay away.
Sure, yeah.
But, uh, you know, I would say ten to fifteen years, at least.
With what you have now?
Yes, sir.
I see, okay.
Yeah.
Well, we good to go for a little bit.
Yes.
Yeah, alright. Okay. And you got anything else, Mr. Davis?
That's it.
Alright. Keep up the good work, Mayor Crimmon, to you and your crew.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all, y'all. Same to y'all.
Next on the agenda will be Ms. Pam Banier. Major, many, Mr. Paul.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I do not have any action items. I did get an email for your informational purpose from DOT. They will be shutting down their debris pickup for Christmas. Uh, I think they're shutting down, uh, Christmas Eve and will not, uh, continue debris pickup to after the New Year. Uh, also, as far as our debris pickup company is concerned, they have completed zone one and zone two. Uh, they'll be finishing up Carabel this afternoon, and then they will go into start the land arc and then, uh, St. Teresa and Alligator Point.
Yeah, we didn't like much left in Carabel.
Mm-mm, mm-mm. Uh, other informational, I got an email from the, um, the, uh, state, um, Dog Island. They do not, uh, consider that, even though it is a special district, they do not consider that like a municipality. So, therefore, FDOT will not be picking up their debris. Uh, they are a, um, separate entity. They can do a contract, pick up their debris theirself, pay for it, and then be reimbursed by FEMA. But DOT is, uh, not going to pick up that debris off of Dog Island.
They know it?
Uh, in the email, they had contacted their consultant, um, Jones. So, um, they had sent an email, so they've had that conversation with them, but I just wanted y'all to be aware of it since, uh, Commissioner Masti, it is in your district.
Okay. I had a question, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Pam, if, if I'm hearing what you're saying correct, didn't, didn't Dog Island sign some kind of MOU or something with DOT for them to take care of it and come under the same plan that county's doing and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
They signed a MOU with us.
Right.
I put it forward to FDOT. But again, DOT says that, uh, they're not like a municipality. They are a special district, but not like a municipality. So, therefore, they're not going to pick up, they are a private island.
I, I would just ask you for clarification, because as I understood it, they had asked us to do an MOU so they could be helped.
But then, but then again, it's, it's up to DOT to decide whether they want to take it on. Commissioner, it takes it out of our hands once we submit it.
You want to weigh in on that?
Yes, please.
Yes, sir. Under the enabling legislation for Dog Island, they are actually a political subdivision in addition to being a special district uh, as to why DOT made the decision they did. We don't have any control or influence over that. We did our local part to try and help. Uh, the state has made their decision, uh, that they are not going to include Dog Island within the MOU, uh, for the state to pay a hundred percent of the debris pickup. So, we don't have any influence or ability to make the state change the route. I mean, there, there's not an appeals process. It's really not the county issue. We did what we could to help by putting them in a position to formally apply to the state just the way that the city of Carabel and the city of Abbot Chocola applied, and they were approved. And I, I don't think that Pam actually, all she knows is the conclusion. She doesn't necessarily know the reasons why DOT made the decision that they did. I mean, clearly, uh, Dog Island special district is not a municipality. I mean, but they were never claiming to be a municipality. They, they said they were a political subdivision. I've read the enabling legislation, and, and for whatever reason, they are called both a special district and a political subdivision uh, in their enabling legislation that was passed by the Florida Legislature and clarified, I think, uh, sometime around the year two thousand, two thousand and one. Uh, they were originally created, uh, in the early nineteen seventies as a special district. But we, you know, County Commission did what you could to help.
Okay.
You're just, you're, you're stuck with the decision that, uh, DOT has made just the way the special district is stuck with that decision.
I want Mr. Lewis down there right there from Savvy's.
I think so, Commissioner Masti.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, the other thing I would like to, uh, is since, um, uh, debris companies are going to be shut down, and, uh, we're already off Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday for Christmas, uh, I'd like to, um, ask the board if my office could close those last two days and at least give us time to use some of our comp time and be ready to come back on the, uh, that Monday before New Year's.
Pleasure, y'all, board. I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masti.
Sir.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any more discussion? Well, y'all need some time, though, but if, you know...
As long as you...
Y'all been pretty busy, but now you know if some come up, y'all still gonna have to come up.
We're on call twenty-four seven. We know that.
Okay.
And we will be in the county.
Alright. Okay. Y'all ready to vote all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous? But, uh, Pam, Ms. Vanier, if you will, get with Fonda.
I'm gonna check with Tracy's, yeah.
And Mr., you know, Navy. And check into the, both of them on that equipment deal?
Mm-hmm. I'm gonna check with Tracy. Also, told Howard, um, the Hickory Dev, if that was damaged by the storm, I need to make sure that he's documented that. Uh, because any temporary repairs he does, we can get, just like, uh, Alligator Point, we get paid for that, but, uh, permanent repairs, you can't start those now until it's looked at, but we can get repaid, reimbursed for those also. But I have to have that document, docu, documentation showing that.
You know what I would, if, if FEMA would pay for the equipment rental, they're both on the rent zone. That way...
Slaves' hours.
Because I was, some of it, we, we ain't up to top notch. We ain't got top notch stock all the way through. Let's try to rent some instead of ten or five.
Yep.
Because we gonna need it down the road.
Um, with tipping fees that will be coming back to the county, Fonda should get a, uh, nice reimbursement from tipping fees. But until then, yes, sir, I'll check in to see if, uh, renting equipment, uh, for the storm is reimbursable.
Yeah, okay. Alright. Appreciate it, and to you and the staff, y'all have a... Mayor Crimmon.
Can I ask just a clarification question?
Yes, sir.
With regard to the, uh, reimbursement from FEMA, and here's an example of the tipping fee, and we've talked about this. Just as example, if we, if we ask FEMA for a dollar of qualified reimbursement, that we spend a dollar, do we get the full dollar back from FEMA?
No.
No.
Is it minus twelve and a half percent?
Yeah.
That's what it is. So, we've still got the plan.
It's minus twenty-five, Alan.
But we...
FEMA only pays seventy-five. State kicks in, and that's up to the state's discretion whether they want to kick in that twenty-five.
We hope that they'll, they'll forgive for twelve and a half percent.
But seventy-five percent is all FEMA reimbursing.
So, we really need to be appropriating or planning at least a, a strong theory that we may only get seventy-five percent of every dollar we declare.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
And are we gonna, we'll talk about that.
To run out of money, yes.
We, we need to plan that event.
Well, for sure, I mean, you know, you have to, you have to weigh, you know, predictable odds on you're gonna run out and the, and the obligation of taxing people for money that maybe you didn't need. I mean, it's a balance that you have to go through every year. Uh, but the million dollars that you have in your reserve contingency is intended to be one, one safety net. It just depends on how big of a safety net you want.
Yeah.
That's a judgment you want to make during budget time.
Okay. See, I was just thinking about the contracts we awarded last week and the, the guys that are gonna be inventorying all of our reimbursables. It makes it so critically important.
Yes.
Okay. Keep up the good, you do it. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Eric Love Crane, extension office director.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I don't have anything for you this morning.
Alright, well, Mayor Crimmon, do you and your staff?
Same to you guys. Appreciate it. The attorney appreciated my short brevity report. Yes. Thank you. I'll have a nice Christmas.
Keep up the good work. Next on the agenda will be Ms. Lisa Lance.
Commissioners, Lisa was, told me earlier in the morning that she wouldn't be here today. She was out of town today. So, she'll have a report next month for you.
Well, next on the agenda will be Mr. Kirk Blair, TDC Administrator Report.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good to see y'all. Um, excuse me. So, let's see. We've got our last collections in for the fiscal year of nineteen, uh, two thousand seventeen, eighteen. And we showed, uh, collections of seventy, yeah, collections of seventy thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars. That's, uh, uh, a little less. Actually, it's something less than twenty thousand dollars less than what we collected in the previous year. But when all is said and done, at the end of September for the whole fiscal year, we were up, excuse me, last year, a little over four percent, four point three percent. We've been running six to seven percent a year. Uh, last year was, this last fiscal year was an up and down year, for a variety of reasons, and, you know, we're still up over the previous year, so, that's a, overall, a, a good sign.
Well, the storm...
The storm and, uh, you know, the storm didn't really take effect until October, but I, I think with, uh, with all the commotion about the, you know, publicity for the storm, we, we lost some, some reservations in, in September and, and we're gonna definitely see an impact on October's, uh, collections when those come in. Reports from some of the lodging companies are that we've got, uh, good solid bookings for, for the spring. I think the summer's gonna probably work out pretty well for us because, uh, in, uh, in November, we, we had a tremendous, I mean, a, a tremendous amount of contact on the internet looking for, uh, places to rent in the, in the spring and next fall. And, uh, so, uh, I think we're gonna see some overflow or as a result of, of some of the areas in the, along the coast that aren't going to be able to get back in time for the season. But for the time being, we're gonna see a hit in, in October. There's no question about it. But, uh, we've got a solid base to it, so I think we'll be alright for the coming fiscal year. Excuse me. Uh, I announced at the last meeting that we had a vacancy coming up this year. Diana Prickett, who's been on the board for a number of years, chose not to ask to be reappointed. So, we advertised for the position. We received four applications, and I've included, uh, all of their background information in your packet. Uh, our board met, um, this, last week and, and selected, uh, Mr. Wild, William Bolton to fill the vacancy. Uh, Mr. Bolton is in the audience, uh, this morning and is available if you have any questions. Mr. Bolton lives on the island. He's a registered voter. He has four or five rental units that he rents and collects the tax. He meets the qualifications for, uh, one of the lodging company appointments, and, and he provides an opportunity to get some representation from the island. So, uh, that's the recommendation from the TDC board, and we'd ask your concurrence.
Pleasure to the board on that.
Question to approve.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Parrish. Any discussion on it?
Mr. Chairman, I got something to put in place.
Wait.
At our eventful first meeting for myself, this is one of the good things, I think, that come out of it. I, I can say that at the time, it was the, the really the best decision to make. There were some issues that need to be clarified that I've talked with Attorney Schuler about, and we'll have those going forward. But at the time, it was the, the best decision we knew to make in the law, the right thing to do. So, I just wanted to clarify that, make sure the board was aware of those discussions.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous?
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Welcome, Liam.
No pressure with that.
Uh, Commissioners, uh, you might remember that, um, for those of you that have been on the board long enough, that, uh, some seven and a half years ago, we, uh, approved two contracts with the, with the two airports, Panama City and, and, uh, and Tallahassee for advertising, uh, in their baggage claim area. In Panama City, the, uh, the, the vehicle was a, a large sign on the, on the back wall between the two, uh, uh, carousels for, for baggage. In Tallahassee, at that time, they had a, a system where they had two TV, oops, excuse me, two TV screens hanging down over the carousels uh, that were not much more than about forty inches, uh, wide. And we had part of the rotation in that, uh, it was a digital screen, and we had part of a rotation in, in that, in that location. Those signs never have been as effective as we'd wanted them to be. Basically, if you're not standing right in front of the TV at the carousel, you don't see what's, what's on the screen. We were notified several weeks ago that, uh, they're in the process of redoing the, the, uh, advertising at the airport. And, uh, by, by March, they're gonna have a new system in place at the, at the baggage claim area. It's going to be a, uh, twenty foot by five foot digital sign that's placed on the back wall between the two, uh, carousels. And they're gonna, they're gonna take the TV screens out. Visibility's going to be, uh, tremendous. I, I walked through it with their representative, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, visibility's really going to be, be exceptional, and you'll be able to see it from anywhere you are in the baggage claim area. And, um, so, we've been offered, uh, an opportunity to participate on that, on that sign. As I say, it'll be digital. It'll be for a ten-second period. There'll be something like seven or eight, uh, different ads on the sign that will rotate through. So, uh, in, you know, a couple of minutes, all of the, uh, all of the signs will, uh, rotate through, and then they'll start over again. So, uh, the visibility will be, uh, particularly good. Uh, I attached to my packet the, uh, contract for the, uh, the, the advertising. What they'll do is terminate the existing agreement that we have, uh, with them for the signage of the baggage area. Uh, as I say, we're about seven and a half years into the ten-year contract. Uh, the new contract would be for five years. We're now spending about two hundred and twenty-one dollars a month for the, the, uh, presence on the TV screens. Uh, this, uh, the new sign will be two hundred and ninety-five dollars a month. And it, as I say, the, the contract period would be for five years. Uh, there'll be a, uh, an initial deposit of a couple hundred dollars. And, uh, so, uh, our board, uh, talked about it at the last meeting and have recommended that we, uh, move ahead and, and engage them to secure a spot on that, uh, on that sign. They're obviously in the process now of, of trying to line up all their advertisers on the, uh, on the sign between now and March when they're going to do the, the changes. I sent the contract to, uh, Mr. Schuler, and he came back with a number of, of points that he thought we needed to get clarification or changes on. And I've communicated those to Clear Channel or their, their representative who handles all of this. Haven't gotten answers back yet from, uh, from them on the, on the clarification that Mr. Schuler provided, but, um, we're gonna recommend, assuming that it meets Mr. Schuler's approval, that, that we go ahead and secure the, uh, the spot. I can't tell you how long it's gonna be available. There are only gonna be seven or eight of them on the, um, on the rotation. So, once they get them all sold, uh, you know, that'll be it, for the time being. But, uh, so, I'm, I'm thinking it would be a good idea to get, uh, at least a commitment that we'll move ahead with it and then get the details worked out on the, on the contract to Mr. Schuler's satisfaction. So, if it's alright with you, we would recommend that we, we, uh, move ahead with the contract subject to final agreement with the attorney's office.
Yes, sir. The, the main comments that I made is I wanted them to delete the indemnification and attorney's fees provision, uh, from the, the current proposed contract and get some clarification on the, the duration of the ad and how frequently the ad would, would be placed. And I'm sure those are details that were intended to be placed in there, but just, you know, it was, it was handwritten and probably just needs to be clarified a little bit. I'm sure Mr. Kirk can take care of that. Uh, but I would recommend moving forward, uh, subject to, to the condition that he has just recommended to you.
I'll make a motion, can I get upon the attorney's review of the contract?
Sir.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. Any more discussion?
Is this money within your budget?
Yes.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous?
Okay.
Kirk, just get with me if there's a problem.
Alright. I, I'll see what they say back and get that to you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Uh, I just provided you as a wrap-up the final list of grants that we, uh, we awarded in the grant process. We, you and I have talked about that revising the process a number of times over the last few months, and our board, uh, got into the whole analysis of all the grants that we provided and came up with, uh, a series of, of different types of grants and that would allow us to increase the, uh, increase the number of, of grants that we provide from about thirty-seven grants to up to fifty. So, we've, we've added a, a group of new grants for the nonprofits. Uh, so we've, we've added a, a group of new grants for the nonprofits. They've, uh, they did a, uh, an application process and reviewed all the applications and, uh, approved the list that I have provided you. And, and those, some of those are already beginning to do their events. And, and, uh, so we're, we're optimistic that that will, uh, meet with your satisfaction. It's, it's consistent with what you and I have been talking about for the last couple of months about the direction that the board has been going in. And I just wanted to provide you with the current list of those projects that were being funded. The, uh, the next item I don't need to have on the agenda today. At our board meeting, we discussed the condition of US ninety-eight between East Point and Carabelle. And our board was looking to weigh in on, on moving those discussions and that contract for repair on the highway along. We understand yesterday that the contract was actually signed with the contractor to do the repairs on, on that section of the highway. So, uh, we're delighted that they're going to move ahead with that and, and, uh, so we don't have to communicate, uh, anything to them. So, uh, we were, we were going to try to come down on the side of getting that done sooner than later. I also, uh, provided you a link in my packet to our new visitor's guide. Some people have had a little trouble, uh, following, falling through on the, on the link. If you have any difficulty, let me know. But, uh, it's a, a, a pretty sizable document. So I didn't, uh, get copies of it all reprinted, uh, for you at the moment, but, but you can review it. Uh, we're now in the, in the final review stages of that, uh, visitor's guide. There have been some changes, actually, since the hurricane that we had to make, make modifications to. Our board is reviewing it now and, and, uh, we're expecting it's going to be ready to go to print in January. Uh, it's, I think you'll agree, a, a very attractive representation of, of Franklin County and, and the services and, and, uh, lodging capabilities that we have. And, uh, we appreciate any comments that you might, uh, you might have on it. Let us know if you have, if there's anything we've overlooked or some spelling errors or, or somebody that we, uh, have in there that isn't anymore. Uh, that's what, uh, our board's going through right now to, in review of it. So we're excited to get that done as well.
I've done a nice job on it.
Thank you. Yeah, I think she did.
I think it is, too.
Yeah. Uh, and finally, Commissioners, this is, uh, probably the last appearance that I'll be making on behalf of the TDC today. I'm scheduled to meet with John Solomon, uh, this afternoon or actually later on this morning to begin the transition that'll allow the chamber to assume the responsibilities by January one. I want to express my sincere appreciation to you and all the staff for your support of me and the TDC over the last twelve years. Achieving the results that we've, uh, that we've had has moved our tourism industry to the forefront of our economic base and is not something for which any one person can take credit for. It's really a team effort, you all, the TDC board, the staff, my staff, uh, the chambers, our visitor centers and, and the industry. It's my hope that, uh, that effort's going to continue and achieve great things in the future. I think we have the basis for it. I think you're gonna, you've got a good team that's going to, uh, start in, uh, in January. And, uh, as I've said before, at this podium, I've been honored to be part of this work and I really thank you for giving me the opportunity to do so. And on that, I want to wish you Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Yeah, thank you.
Kurt, I, I'd like to say I think you've done a tremendous job for, uh, the TDC in Ford County and, and we do appreciate your service. Uh, as we're talking about transition, I would like to mention that, uh, seems like some of the TDC members are having problems transitioning to a new administrator. This board has made a decision who that administrator will be. And I would like to state that if there are members of the board that cannot work with the new administrator, then maybe they need to turn in their resignation and start over with a new board. Uh, this board has made their decision. Uh, I think our new administrator will do an awesome job if given the opportunity and I think he deserves that opportunity. And if he can't do the job in two years, then we'll make a change. But other than that, TDC board does not run the T, uh, the function. The function falls on the county. We turn authority over to TDC volunteer members and they should take what the board has given them to work with and move forward with that. And let's move forward and, and keep this thing going and, and benefit everybody in the community. And we do appreciate your service, or I do.
Yeah, thank you for your service, Mr. Kirk. You've done a good job.
Well, thank you, sir. I think our board's going to do fine. Uh, there are a few, few people that had questions and, and I don't want to overstate the discussion that, that occurred at the meeting, but I think Commissioner Jones will agree, uh, you've got a good board and they'll work through it. They, you know, any transition is difficult for any, any group and we're no different than any of the others. So, uh, but I'm optimistic that with John and his team, um, and our board and some of the new members that you'll be getting, that you're going to have a very workable situation.
Yeah, if they, we'll work it up. We get it. It's gonna be all right.
Thank you. Take care.
Okay.